Good evening. I am calling to order the February 24th, 2020 Menlo Park Planning Commission meeting. Roll call. Commissioners Cale, DeCarty, Kennedy, Barnes, Riggs, and Doran are present. Commissioner Tate is absent. Reports and announcements. Under reports and announcements, staff and commission members may communicate general information of interest regarding matters within the jurisdiction of the commission. No commission discussion or action can occur on any of the presented items. Good evening, Ms. Sandmeyer.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and Commissioners. So, I have an update. So tomorrow night, the accessory dwelling unit urgency ordinance to bring our ordinance into compliance with new state laws will be going to the City Council, and that agenda item includes direction on future steps. And that's all I have for reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer? Seeing none, I'll move to D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. So what this means is, if you're here tonight to provide comment to the planning commission on an item that is not on the agenda, now is your time to fill out a card and come forward, and we'd love to hear from you. If you are here specifically for an item that is on the agenda at the particular time of that agenda item, I will call for public comment for each specific agenda item, and you have an opportunity then to give public comment, should you wish to do so. Having no cards and seeing no one coming forward for general public comment, I will close general public comment and move to consent counter. E1, this is approval of the minutes and court reporter from the January 27th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner DeCarty.
I have a clarifying question for the chair, for staff. So, in approval of minutes from last time, we also have the transcript from the EIR discussion. Is that included with the minutes, or is that just for information? Or if we have a question about that document, how does that handle?
Well, it's together as one item, so, but if you have a correction or question...
So we can ask for a correction in the EIR in the same way that we can with minutes?
Do you mean the transcript?
The transcript.
Yes, yeah, if there's something incorrect, we'll fix it.
All right, then I'll request it as poll.
Okay. And look forward to, do you have specific revisions?
Yeah, so it's on page 38 of the EIR. There's a word in the middle that says accessible, and since it was one of my comments, I intended it to be acceptable, and I am...
Okay, hold on, let me, because I want to make sure I get this as well. Page 38, okay, what line, numerically speaking?
Line 10.
Line 10, okay.
It's just not accessible.
Okay.
And I either said or intended to say acceptable.
So strike the "not," is that correct?
No, just replace accessible with acceptable.
Acceptable, got it.
And pardon my mumbling at whatever hour of the evening that was.
Well, it's still early then.
With that, I have no other recommendations for...
Thank you. Are there any other provisions to the minutes that's put forward? Having no other, staff, are we, Ms. Sandmeyer, are you clear about that correction?
Yes.
Okay, great. So with that, and seeing no...
I'll just move adoption. Since we polled it, we have to adopt, is that right?
Correct, we have to vote to adopt.
So I'll move with that change.
We have a first from Commissioner DeCarty, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Second.
We had a, sorry, we had a second from Commissioner Riggs, first from DeCarty, second from Riggs, all in favor of adopting the, approving the minutes as noted and revised by Commissioner DeCarty. Please raise your hand. Let the record show that it's Commissioners Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, DeCarty, and Cale, all voting yes. The minutes are adopted as revised. Moving to item F, public hearing. This is F1, a use permit for 920 Cloud Avenue. Request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Good evening, Ms. Sandmeyer, I see that you are the lead on this project.
Yes, good evening again. So we did receive one email over the weekend from the neighbor to the rear of the property requesting taller screening trees along the rear property line, and we've printed copies and put them at the back counter and at the dais. I don't have any other updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. I see two lights on Commissioner Riggs and Commissioner DeCarty. Are they in relation to clarifying question? Seeing the lights turned off and seeing no other clarifying questions for staff, I'll move, progress now to invite the applicant to come up and tell us a little bit about your project. Good evening.
My name is Heather Brewer of Arc Studio Inc., a custom residential architecture firm located in Willow Glen San Jose. I'm speaking to you on behalf of Architect Robin McCarthy and the property owner Gold Silver Island Properties LLC regarding our project in 920 Cloud Avenue. Gold Silver Island Properties LLC is a custom home development company who is known for building high-quality and architecturally pleasing custom homes in Menlo Park and surrounding areas with great attention to quality materials and designs. The scope of work, as you mentioned, involves demolishing the existing single-story home and building a new 2,349 square foot two-story residence with an attached 441 square foot two-car garage. The design includes four bedrooms, three baths, a half-bath, laundry room, formal living and dining areas, and a great room with a kitchen and family space opening out to a newly landscaped yard. The architectural style of the proposed home is craftsman, with the primary exterior material as a horizontal lap siding and shingle siding in the gables. The design features corbels and stylistic detailing at the front porch to highlight the craftsman components of the home. The roofing material is a combination of a gray-colored composite shingle. The window and door frames will be white, along with all other finishing trims. The height of the residence is less than the zoning guidelines of 28 feet maximum. As you can see from this slide, the second story is set back from all sides, with several single-story elements offering great balance to the architecture and minimizing the bulk and mass of the structure. The proposed design will blend seamlessly into the surrounding neighborhood, as many of the homes are of a traditional style with several craftsmen, ranch, and shingle-style After canvassing the neighborhood and meeting with the neighbors, we are confident that this home will be a welcome addition to the community, increase the values of nearby properties, and be a benchmark for outstanding design and construction for other homes in the surrounding Menlo Park neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions, clarifying questions at the outset for the applicant? Mr. Cale.
Thank you. Hi, I have two questions. One is, with the lap siding, will those be mitered corners, or are those going to be, we have corner boards?
It will be miter.
Mitered corners, so you use the thicker, hardy material?
Yes, it's the hardy cement board.
Great, okay. And I see that there's vinyl windows as well?
Yes.
Is there any consideration given towards going with wood windows, just to, I think the neighborhood would support something like that?
Yes, we can consider that. I'll have to take that back to Robin McCarthy.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights on, I'll ask you to stay close. I'm going to call for public comment. We'll have discussion up here, and you may have some additional questions.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Do you want to sit down?
Yes, please, have a seat, thank you. So I'm looking for any public comment cards in relation to this agenda item. I have none. Anyone would like to come forward, please. Come forward, if you haven't filled one out already, please feel free to give your public comment, and you can fill out afterwards.
I actually sent her an email about, I had a concern, I'm an EVO.
And you're welcome to do that, but if you would like to give public comment this evening for this particular item, please come forward, give it, and then you can give, you can fill out a comment card when you're done. Those are two separate items, sending an email and doing a public comment card.
Was it emails or...
The email, you could choose to have the email suffice. If you choose to say something now, we would welcome that, but you'll need to fill out a comment card when you are done giving your public comment. What would you like to do?
I can leave my comment.
Feel free to do that, thank you. And then, please, please fill out a comment card after you're done. Good evening. Please state your name and your either political jurisdiction or the organization which you represent.
Okay. My name is Tina Aip, and I'm an EVO. My house is to the rear of this proposed property. It's on 905 Sherman, and my concern was that, because this is now going to be a two-story structure, my concern is that, you know, from the second floor, there will be visibility into my backyard and the back rooms of my house, which is primarily the master bedroom and the family room. So what I suggested was a taller fence and mainly taller trees, because the fence doesn't really help, you know, in obscuring visibility from the second floor. So I'm asking for taller screening trees. I think the proposal suggested that there would be trees that were six foot in height, but that doesn't really help with, you know, obscuring the view from the second floor of the property. So I'm asking for taller trees at the time of planting, ideally 12 to 15 feet in height.
And please be sure to fill out a public comment card, thank you. Would anyone else like to give public comment on this item? I have no additional public comment cards, and seeing no one coming forward, I'll close public comment and bring it back up to the dais for additional conversation and discussion amongst Commissioners. Commissioner Cale.
Through the chair, do you want to ask the applicant about the trees, about the screening that's proposed?
Feel free to...
Okay, I'd like to ask the applicant to address the comments we just heard in the email that was sent about the height of the trees at the time of planting.
So we did receive, excuse me, this is Heather Brewer, we did receive the neighbor's email, and I would like to read an email from our landscape architect proposing to mitigate this concern. She says, "We can propose the evergreen tree, which would be about 12 feet in height at the time of planting," and then she says she would suggest planting four of the Lazarus Saratoga in 24-inch box containers, which they would be, yeah, 11 to 12 feet in height of planting, and grow to about 20 to 30 feet tall and 15 to 30 wide, and then plant them six feet apart.
Thank you. Commissioner Cale.
Okay, so, generally, I think the project is easy to support, it fits the neighborhood. I have a few negative comments, a few positive comments. On the negative side, I think that the garage is very prominent and tall, and the ceiling heights are actually fairly tall, at 10 feet and 9 feet, with up to 12 feet in the middle. But it works fairly well with the proportions and how the second floor is set back. Would actually like to see the second floor set back a little bit more at the front. I'm glad that the applicant is considering wood windows, I think that'd be a great addition. On the positive side, the mitered corners are great, the porch is a nice, a nice touch, and the woodwork details that go with the craftsmen and the balance of the overall house seems to work very well. So I would support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy.
I agree with Commissioner Cale, and I also want to say that I think it's terrific that the applicants are willing to plant so many immensely mature trees, and I would make a motion to approve this project.
We have a first from Commissioner Kennedy. I believe I saw Commissioner Riggs's, like, first. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. I, too, find this a very supportable project. I do have a concern, though, about the rather aggressive response to the privacy issue. When you plant trees, unlike building a fence or setting a roof height, you're starting something in motion, and trees grow. So what we will have here in a matter of 10 years at six feet apart will be something in the neighborhood of a 15 to 18-foot hedge, which will continue to grow from there. Six foot on center is very close for planting trees. And the only way that I know of, and I can't speak to examples, but locally, but the only way I know of to provide an instant screen, and yet have a reasonable outlook to the future, is to plant trees with the intention of coming back and removing every other one or two out of every three. So I'm not sure just how urgent this is and how aggressive we want to be in providing this screening, so I would like to second the motion, but with a friendly amendment to ask that an arborist be consulted as part of a landscape review by staff to look forward to what these trees will be like in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, if that's acceptable to the maker.
So allow me to dig in a little bit on that. So the arborist review as a part of the landscape review by staff, would it be to get the arborists' concurrence that in a date forward, removal of the trees would be a good idea, however there's no enforcement mechanism, but get an understanding of best practices from the arbor staff? Is that...
Approximately, what I'm recommending is that before we make it part of the approval, before that approval is finalized, or the condition is finalized, that the condition be reviewed by an arborist with specific comment to whether this group of six-foot-on-center trees will be attractive in 10, 15, and 20 years. And then, quite honestly, we should probably ask for 10, 20, and 30 years. It's not like these houses are going anywhere. There are properties around Redwood City, Menlo Park, and I'm sure Palo Alto, though I haven't noticed lately, where there's a very odd stand of trees, where one can only look and think, wow, either the guy on the left or the guy on the right really doesn't like his neighbor, because there would be no other explanation for such an odd cluster of dense trees.
Got it. And so based on what the arborists thought was a best practice, looking out 10, 20, 30 years, they could make a discretionary call on the spacing, and staff would hew to that?
That's my suggestion.
Is that correct? Okay, that's a first. We have a first from Kennedy, second from Riggs. Riggs offering a friendly amendment, looking to the maker for thoughts.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
Okay.
Please come forward.
And then I have a clarifying question for the neighbor. So you were very quick to say that you would be happy to screen the, screen the back of the yard from the neighbor's view?
Yes.
And aggressively, and plant a lot of trees. I think planting a significant stand of trees and then in 10 years taking out half is kind of a waste, so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to work with the arborists, with, you know, an arborist and the city, determining what would be the perfect blend, since we're solving for privacy, and maybe there are some sort of low-value shrub hedges that can grow quickly, that are planted while the larger, more mature trees are growing, to create that screening? And then the question to the neighbor, is your house one-story or two-stores? I might have missed that.
And let me pull it back a moment. Ms. Sandmeyer, protocol, shall we go out to the neighbor as part of permissible discussion? Or not, shall we? Is it permissible to go back out to the neighbor as part of discussion?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Okay, great. If the neighbor would like to respond to that, please come forward.
Okay, great. So it does, so would the...
I'm sorry, please, please come forward. So, just for the record, the question, if you'd mind restating it?
So the question for the neighbor was whether your home, as it exists today, is one-story or two?
And the response was?
It's one-story.
Great, thank you.
Okay, terrific, so I understand. And then, to the applicant, would they be willing to work out a, an appropriate blend that solved for the immediacy of the screening, plus the long-term care and growth of a stand of trees that did not become unmanageable for the new homeowner, or subsequent homeowners, or, you know, a wall of trees?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I have a, I have a first and a second, and a friendly from the second. Are you accepting the second, or are you looking to reject the second and have a different motion, or amendment, amending your own original motion?
Amending my own, so I'm looking to reject the first, the amendment, the friendly amendment, and requesting instead that more initial care and thought goes into the blend of screening between shrub, fast-growing shrubbery and trees, so that we do not in five or 10 years remove healthy trees just because they've become a danger to themselves or to the properties?
Absolutely.
And from a mechanics standpoint, are you asking staff to do that review, for instance, in concert with the arborist or internal staff looking at the landscape plan, and would that be something almost discretionary by the staff to review that particular condition of approval?
It's discretionary by the staff to give that kind of approval.
Looking to staff, is that something that staff is able to do?
Yeah, we can work with the city arborist to figure that out. I do have one question about the motion. Is there a requirement for 12-foot screening initially, or is it, if the city arborist says it's better to use smaller plants that will grow quickly, is that, would that also be okay?
Right, we're back to the original. We have a motion to approve the project as in a staff report with a friendly amendment here. You're not accepting a friendly amendment, so she's asking for clarification of your condition.
Right, so the condition is that the applicant came, when asked the question by the chair if, if the applicant would be, would consider some additional screening of trees, came back and said, yes, we can plant 12 very fast-growing trees, plus some additional trees. I'm saying, rather than the friendly amendment of coming back in a few years and removing half of, a third of the trees, just because they've grown too close, why not hedge our bets on the front side and screen appropriately with a blend of, a blend of trees and shrubs?
And so through the chair, I just want to clarify, there's no minimum height depending on what the city arborist says, so the condition wouldn't be for a minimum height at this time?
And I'll look to the maker.
It was based on...
No, I'm sorry, are you calling out, are you calling out a minimum height?
Yes, so the applicant said that they would plant trees at 12 feet.
Okay, so we've got a...
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, based on the neighborhood, the neighbor's email.
Right, but not the volume of 12-foot trees, a blend of 12-foot trees and some shrubs that were appropriate, so that the trees could grow healthily to a certain, you know, to a certain height. But in the, in the interim, while those trees are growing and thickening, there would be some additional screening for the neighbors, so the neighbor could experience some privacy for their bedrooms.
And do you have any specificity around the screening, or leave that, because...
Leave that to the professional arborists.
And it'll need to be, because they're contemplating a seven-foot-high fence, the screening would be greater than...
Yes.
Seven feet?
Yes.
And the screening to be determined by the arborist as it relates to a good blend of the 12-foot trees and whatever screening looks like from, I assume, a shrubbery perspective?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Sandmeyer.
Yeah, that's clear, thank you.
You're clear?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, we have a first, a second. The first, the maker has conditioned it to what we just talked about. Commissioner Cale.
I was going to jump in and second the motion as revised, and I wanted to point out that there's over 70 feet between the one-story house and the balcony, which is actually on a small scale for balcony, so I think they've done a good job keeping them apart.
Okay. Looking for any other comments on this agenda item? Seeing no other lights on, and having a first and a newly-seconded second from Commissioner Cale, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the project as per the staff report, and with the conditions as articulated by Commissioner Kennedy, please raise your hand. The record show it's Commissioners Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, DeCarty, and Cale, all voting affirmatively. It's unanimous, congratulations, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. Proceeding now to F2, public hearing. This is the use permit for 1010 Mallet Court. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single, construct two new two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R3 Apartment Zoning District. One heritage-sized Japanese maple tree in fair condition is proposed to be moved, removed as part of the project. Good evening, Mr. Paz.
Good evening, Chair Barnes. As an update, the commission received an email that was forwarded, or rather, staff received an email, which was forwarded to the commission earlier today outlining some additional concerns from a neighbor, and you should have received a hard copy of that at the dais. I'm seeing some heads nodding, so that concludes the updates from staff at this time.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Paz, before we get started? Seeing no lights on, I'll proceed now to say good evening to the applicant, and please come forward and tell us a little bit about your project. It's like Groundhog Day. Good evening.
Hello again.
Please again state your name for the record.
Of course. My name is Heather Brewer, and I am also speaking to you tonight regarding our project at 1010 Mallet Court, representing Robin McCarthy, Architect, and Gold Silver Island Properties LLC. The scope of work involves demolishing the existing single-story home, which is an estate of disrepair, and the dilapidated detached two-car garage on the property. The proposed is the construction of two new individual, single-family residences divided by a condominium plan. Each two-story residence has an attached, single-car garage... Each two-story residence has an attached, single-car garage and contains four bedrooms, three full baths, and a great room with a kitchen, living room, and dining room space that opens into efficient landscape design. The laundry facilities in each unit are in their attached garages. The architectural style of the proposed homes is craftsmen. The primary exterior material is a horizontal lap siding on the first floor and shingle siding at the second floor with varying materials in the gables. The roofing material is a combination of a gray-colored composite shingle. The window and door frames will be white along with all other finishing trims. The height of the residences is less than the zoning guidelines of 35 feet maximum. The second story is set back in multiple locations on both homes, minimizing the bulk and mass of the structures. The proposed design will blend seamlessly into the surrounding neighborhood, as many of the homes of our, are of a traditional style with several craftsmen and shingle-style homes. After canvassing the neighborhood and meeting with the neighbors, we are confident that these homes will be a welcome addition to the community and increase the values of nearby properties. This project is in response to the current housing crisis plaguing the Bay Area. We hope that architecture alike the proposed design will become a part of the solution to mitigate the shortage. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for the applicant? Mr. Cale.
Thank you. First, I wanted to ask if you had seen the email from Nick Webb, and he said that he was not attending, he did not attend that meeting and was, did not receive any calls back from his voice messages. Can you speak to that?
As far as him being listed on the neighborhood list and not being in attendance, that was a clerical error. As far as the, the voicemails and not returning phone calls, I don't know anything to that effect, but, yeah.
Okay. On this project, there are corner boards.
Yes.
On the front house, I'm just comparing the, the perspective from the elevation, is the-
Sure.
Is the house all white? From what I can tell on the elevations, it looks like all the, all the materials are going to be painted white.
So on the-
This house?
Yes, the front house, it is actually a soft yellow as proposed right now.
Okay.
And then the, all the trims are white.
Okay. I'm not sure how you can answer this next question, but-
Okay.
I'm comparing this project to the one we just looked at on Cloud Avenue, and-
Yes.
It's the same architect, the same owner.
That's correct.
But this, this project does not seem to be as successful as the other project. There's, there's less detail, there's less woodwork to it. Can, I don't know how you can answer this, but is there, can you talk about why there's sort of a contrast between the two projects?
Well, I believe that the home on Cloud Avenue, we were definitely embracing the more historical features of the craftsman style, and, and I believe with these homes, we were kind of leaning more towards a contemporary craftsman style.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other lights on and no additional questions for the applicant, I will ask you to stay close. I'm going to call for public comment and then bring it back up to the dais for additional discussion. Thank you. I'm looking for any public comment cards. Anyone like to give public comment on this issue? I currently have no cards. And seeing no coming, so, excuse me, seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public comment and bring the, good evening.
Do we have some comments?
Yes, if you'd like to give a public comment, after you're done, please fill out a comment card and give it to Ms. Sandmeyer over there.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, you've got three minutes.
Okay.
Please state your name and your political jurisdiction or the organization you represent.
My name's Joe O'Connor. I grew up 120 Mallet Court. We share the backyard with the new property proposing. So I have some questions about the construction process. My wife and I are, she's expecting in June, so we have a baby coming in the way, so we're worried about health conditions. Particularly, it's a very old home. We're worried about like lead or asbestos during the deconstruction process, and how they're mitigating all of that for when they tear down the, the old house. So we're concerned about that. Also, if they're spraying any water, where the water could leach into our backyard where our family will be living with some of that construction waste. And I'm just wondering how the, how you regulate and how you make sure that the construction goes clean and smooth and follows all the standards? And if there's a permit for the demolition, I'm wondering if there's that as well?
Great. So what we'll do is I'll take those comments. We can't respond in real time, but your comments are noted, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, and I'll write it down?
Just write, fill out the comment card, which is your name, address, and the agenda items you're talking about. You can do that at your leisure before you leave this evening.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And you still have a few minutes and a half, so if you have something else you'd like to say, please feel free.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm-
It's the same, are you the same entity?
Uh-
Or are you a new commenter?
I'm a new commenter.
Okay, so fill out your comment card if you would. Please introduce yourself, your name, and your address or political jurisdiction.
Okay, I'm Jessica Yarasic. I'm also a neighbor. I live at 1020 Mallet Court, which is less than 20 feet to the right of, of this property. So I also have a couple of questions. But first, I want to say I was glad to see that email from, I think, Nick, because I have also had problems contacting the phone number that was provided to me and the email, zero response. I've called and left multiple messages and emails and have not gotten any sort of response from the developer. Also, I, when I first saw the list that all those people attended, I, I was skeptical about that too, because I was there and there weren't that many people there. So that's a questionable thing. But my question is, and why I've been trying to get a hold of him, is because obviously I'm pregnant and we really want to know more about the timeline. I know there's not a legal way to force him to tell us that, but we do live 20 feet from the property and because of health and safety concerns, and obviously we've, we've never had a kid before, so there's a lot of unknowns there for us personally, we would just like to be updated on when the demolish part is happening and also when the construction part is happening, so we can just manage our community life that way. Let's see. And I also wanted to ask about if valid public notice was given, and if it was a requirement to post publicly on the building that it is being demolished, because I haven't seen anything like that on the building. So those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Would anyone else like to give public comment on this agenda item? I will be, having no other cards, I'll be closing public comment now and bringing it back up to the dais for discussion.
Yeah, through the chair, could I ask staff, could you let me know, or just remind me about what happens during the deconstruction process and what the regulations are about concerns regarding removal, asbestos, lead, how that's checked on, and how the city pays attention to make sure that's done in a healthy way for neighbors?
So the, there is a demolition permit, so an applicant would need to apply for a demolition permit, and then the, there are requirements and standards that are governed by the Building Division about hazardous materials, if those are uncovered on site. And then there's also construction best management practices that need to be followed. As far as a more detailed, more detailed information about that process, I can, I can certainly connect with the Building Division and, and relay any additional information from them, as they are the subject matter experts in that.
And so if a neighbor was concerned, they could touch base with you or the Building Commission for more detail?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And then can I, further, through the chair, a further follow-up question? If, if somebody has concern about public notice and about the accuracy of documentation about who was checked in with prior to submitting plans, can you also just, is, is there an avenue that they can check with staff about that concern and, and get a greater understanding about that?
So, yes, with respect to kind of the public noticing as part of a use permit project, and what the, you know, the applicant's neighborhood outreach, that is not strictly speaking, a required component of the project review process. So we're relying on the information that the applicant provides. Certainly, if, if a neighbor notices that they're included in, in that and they, they were not in attendance, then kind of speaking out is kind of the, the best course of action. Or if they have questions, our contact information is the project planner and kind of the city generally is provided. With respect to notices on, for demolition, there, there hasn't been a demolition permit granted yet, so, again, that would be something that the Building Division would know in a little bit more detail, but one of the reasons why they wouldn't have seen a notice is because there hasn't been a permit granted yet.
True, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cale.
Thank you. So I would just mention to the public commenter that there, there will be a demo permit, and a lot of your questions could be answered by the Building Department. If you wanted to visit them, they could address almost all of your concerns, not the scheduling, but the other concerns you have. So regarding the house itself, as I mentioned, this is not as successful as the other project we saw, and the rear house is actually even less successful than, than the front one we're looking at. This front house, there's a lot going on with lap siding and shingle siding and vertical siding and corner boards, and it just doesn't have the, sort of the, the, the great detailing that we saw in the, in the previous project. Is that enough to deny the project or ask for continuance? I don't think so, but I'm also concerned about the, the failed public outreach, how it seems like it, it has not worked for several of the neighbors. So I'm, I'm on the fence on this, and I'm just curious to hear what some other commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Doran.
Yeah, I actually share both those concerns. I'm not an architect, so I won't comment in detail on the architecture, but I'm very concerned about what we've heard from two neighbors now about lack responsiveness to the neighbor's concerns and questions about the accuracy of the sign-up sheet from the open house. So I think on that basis alone, I think continuance would be justified.
Well, I guess I'll move to continue the application.
We have a motion from Commissioner Doran to continue. I think the next slide I saw on was Commissioner DeCarty.
I guess I just have a clarifying question either, for either the two commissioners that want to continue it. So it's continued, and what happens between now and the next time we see that, that would make it more successful? Is there to be successful outreach, that therefore neighbors would have the opportunity to be able to have greater input? Is that the, just to clarify what the purpose is, would be great.
Commissioner Doran.
Yeah, I, my purpose would be to allow the neighbors to express their opinions to the developer, and hopefully the developer would respond to those when he brought it back to us, whatever their concerns are.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, through the chair, if I could ask a question of staff. Lacking a meeting called by the developer, how would we normally determine the success of neighbor outreach?
So the, again, as neighborhood outreach is not a required component of the process, we do encourage the applicants to perform neighborhood outreach, and sometimes that's providing a mailer with the plans, sometimes it's, it's less extensive. And so if no outreach is done, then we would mention that in the staff report, and then you can contrast that with if neighborhood outreach was done to folks in a given area and they provide mailers, we will have the applicants update their project description letter to reflect the extent of the outreach that they, they performed.
And what notification does the city perform, and to what neighbors?
The city provides notices typically as a seven-day notice, so following the submittal of an application, properties within 300 feet, for a project of this scale, it would be properties within 300 feet of the subject property, they would receive a mailer with a link to the project plans, and then a contact whoever the staff person is as the project planner. Later on in the process, once the meeting date has been determined, there's a notice that goes into the newspaper, and then there's another mailed notice to that 300-foot radius notifying them that it has been scheduled, that the item has been scheduled for a planning commission hearing, and then the, where to find the, the staff report, and again, the contact of the project planner.
Through the chair, I don't believe we've asked the applicant to explain, other than the, the one missing person or incorrectly reported person, as a clerical error. It looks like we may have two. Perhaps the applicant could speak to what this outreach did achieve?
Would the applicant like to come forward and address the issue as put forward by Commissioner Riggs?
My name's Heather Brewer, and in regards to this concern, we did have a meeting at the-
So can you put the mic a little bit closer?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
We did have a meeting at the property, and I believe four or five neighbors did show up. And in retrospect, we, we should have been more diligent in recording the specific neighbors who did show up. I mean, I guess we did our best to remember everyone and their addresses, but I believe there was mailers also sent out by the developer notifying everyone within that radius that Ori mentioned about the project, and then only four or five neighbors did show up. But I believe there were immediate neighbors. This neighbor who came up and spoke, she did show up, and I believe there was a couple just from the, the immediate vicinity.
So before we vote, I would just, and thank you for that. I would just note that while the report on how many neighbors showed up to the meeting seems to have been mishandled, I think we've had presentations where perhaps one neighbor would show up to the meeting. We may have even had a project here where zero neighbors showed up to the meeting. So I might hesitate to react to the quality of the meeting report, and rather look for The first thing I usually check on the staff report is what letters were received on the project, and what the subject matter was. And in this case, we seem to have both a letter and a speaker aligned in two cases, and it doesn't appear that we have other input. And so perhaps as we did on the previous project, we could focus on whether the issues brought up by the two neighbors have been adequately addressed. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Commissioner Cale.
So I will second the motion for Commissioner Doran. I think the, the point of the, of the continuance for the outreach is that there's a conflict of what, what was actually, what actually occurred. Some, there's two different versions of what happened, also- Also, there's some problems with the phone number, or getting calls returned. So I think that should all be cleaned up. The other point of the continuance is to have the applicant take a closer look at refining the design in terms of detailing, massing materials, and bring the standards up to what we have seen in the previous project. Thank you.
Okay, to summarize, we have a first from Commissioner Dorn, a second from Commissioner Cale. Commissioner Cale, did I hear in your second any specific conditioning in your second?
There were some general guidelines, nothing specific.
Okay. So we have a first from Dorn, second from Cale, to continue the project without specific conditions associated with it coming back. Some general guidelines, of course. Looking at staff, talk to us a little bit about the continuance process, what the queue might look like for coming back, and also, the level of specificity you're going to look for or need, if any, as part of the continuance process.
As it relates to the agendas presently, we're booking complete items for the second meeting in April. So, if there, if the item is continued tonight, it's unlikely that it would be able to come back to the planning commission until the second meeting in April or early May. And that is, again, dependent on the number of other items that are ready, and then how long they've been in the queue as well. As it relates to the continuance process more generally, typically, it's helpful to have specific guidelines for the applicant so that they can clearly demonstrate that they have met the intent of the commission, and then respond to that in a meaningful way so that when we bring it back in the staff report, it's very clear what they were directed to do, what they've been able to do, and kind of how it lies between them.
Got it. So we've heard about the timeline, and we've heard about the preferred level of specificity from staff. I'll leave it to the maker in a second, or whether they wish to tighten up their guidance or not. That's at your discretion, based on what the staff has said. Commissioner Cale.
Sure, I can offer more feedback on the, be specific. Normally, I would, except, you know, we've seen a great example of what the architect can do, so that's why I was being a little more vague. But specifically, I would look at the detailing such as eliminating the corner boards, or minimizing them to paint it out to match the adjacent siding. I'd like to see more woodworking details that are in keeping with the craftsman tradition. I'd like to see maybe a reduction of the, excuse me, the number of materials. There's a lot going on in terms of the different types of siding. And especially in regards to the rear house, maybe a refinement of the proportions and the massing. There's a, the neighbor commented about adding a gable to the front of this house we're looking at, house number one, the front house. But I'll leave that to the architect to decide. But I think a cleaner look at just the proportions would be very helpful, too.
Thank you. We have from Commissioner Cale, and curious if the maker has any additional level of specificity that the applicant could remedy as far as it relates to outreach in the intervening timeframe?
Sure. Yeah, I would like to see evidence that the two neighbors who are on the record as not having phone calls and emails returned did get addressed. And I would like to see, I think, another meeting so we can get more input from the neighbors on the design and the plan.
So we've got a first and a second, both, one as it relates to the architectural aspects, one as it relates to the outreach aspects. Looking for any other additional comments from commissioners before I call for a vote on this topic. Looking to staff, staff, are you clear on what has been relayed by the two commissioners as far as the, what's related to the continuance and what is looked for when the applicant comes back?
Yes, it's our understanding that Commissioner Dorn is accepting the conditions added by Commissioner Cale regarding the design, and then the two items regarding the outreach to be updated. So a record that the neighbors who did not receive a response are contacted and receive a response, and an additional community meeting to be held prior to returning to the commission.
Thank you. And that brings up a good point. I apologize, Commissioner Dorn, I didn't ask if you were, as the maker, okay with Commissioner Cale's amendments. You are, okay. So with that clarity. Any other comments as it relates to this item? I will say for one, this is a tough one for me. You know, it's always tough on the outreach because I always have in the back of my head that the outreach is, the outreach process is both prescriptive and mandatory, and it's actually not in Menlo Park. And it is quite subjective. And even though if you look at the paperwork that you get from the city, it calls for it, staff is not saying that it's mandated as part of the process. So it becomes, and every time it comes back to commission, we're always having discussions about the requisite level of it. So it is a bit of a moving target, and, you know, I don't know how to, so I have some sympathy for the applicant in that regard. I also see holes in the applicant's outreach in that regards. So it's, yeah, it's a tough one, but I think I know how I'm going to vote. Any other comments or questions before I call for a vote on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion by Commissioner Dorn, seconded by Commissioner Cale, as it relates to this project with the conditions as articulated, please raise your hand. Let the record show that Commissioner Dorn and Commissioner Cale voting in the affirmative, all opposed. Please raise your hand. The record show that Commissioner Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, and DeCarty are opposed. The motion as proposed fails. Looking for other commissioner next steps.
I'm going to disappoint. I'm not quite going to order, offer the motion, but I did forget, as part of the normal site review that we do, because we got distracted on other issues, or I got distracted. The air conditioning units appear to be located against the property line fences, and we don't do that. That's a little unfair to the neighbors. Those units run on hot nights when a neighbor without air conditioning, or prefers not to have it, has their windows open, and therefore has to hear it. So, I hope that in whatever motion we make that the units could be relocated, is that something that the applicant would be okay with?
We can, yes, we can analyze a different location for that.
All right, thank you.
I will take what Commissioner Riggs just said and make that into a motion for approval.
For clarification, Commissioner Riggs, you did not offer a motion, correct?
Correct. I only asked for the AC units to be relocated from the fence, presumably to the house.
Got it. So we've got a first from DeCarty with the AC units being located away from the fence to the side of the house. Looking for a second?
If I may.
Yes.
Through the chair, this is a point of clarification on the site plan. It does appear the AC units are proposed to be adjacent to the houses and not the fences at the property line. So I just wanted to confirm that that was on A1-2.
Through the chair, am I misreading the plan when I look at sheet A1-2? Oh, I'm sorry, what are these circles which also appear on the rendering?
Those are garbage, I think.
Those are, I apologize, those are garbage cans.
Oh, for heaven's sakes. I have not had garbage cans.
I apologize, I have the plan in front of me, it's at my seat.
All right, thank you. So, in that case, I withdraw my concern.
Okay.
Thank you to Ori for noticing.
So we have a first from DeCarty without, obviously, the AC unit, because they are in fact trash enclosures, masquerading as AC units.
I apologize for the confusion.
Looking for a second on this?
All right, I'll second.
We have a first from DeCarty, second from Riggs. Thank you. And before I call for a vote, I do think, in fact, the architecture is suboptimal. I think it's a somewhat lazy approach, and I look at the back, which I don't think is the best foot forward for this project. It is challenging, though, that, you know, does it meet the minimum standard? Sure. Is it the best foot forward? I absolutely don't think so, but I don't think it's enough for me to vote either against it or to continue it. So, I will, so that's my comment. Looking for any other comments? Seeing none, and Commissioner Riggs, your light's on, is that just legacy? Great. So we've got a first from DeCarty, second from Riggs, to approve the project as per the staff report. All in favor, raise your hand. The record show that it's Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, and DeCarty all voted in affirmative. All opposed, please raise your hand. Commissioner Dorn and Commissioner Cale opposing the project. The project is approved by a 4-2-2 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to the last item on tonight's agenda for public hearing, this is agenda item F3. This is a use permit for 700 Hermosa Way. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing two-story, single-family residence, that three detached accessory buildings in a detached secondary dwelling unit, and construct a new two-story residence in a detached secondary dwelling unit on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the RE Residential Estate zoning district. The proposal includes removal of one heritage Douglas fir tree. Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, commissioners. Staff does not have anything to add to the staff report at this time.
Great. Any clarifying questions for staff as it relates to the staff report? Seeing none, I will call for the applicant to come forward and tell us about your project.
I'm Jaime Gonzalez. I'm the homeowner of 700 Hermosa Way. And I'm here today to apply for a permit to build a home for me and my family. Don't know what else to say.
If that's what you have to say, thank you.
Excuse me?
If that's all you have to say, that's perfectly fine. If the architect has nothing to add as it relates to the project, introduce it or otherwise enlighten us on some of the characteristics of the project, or why a use permit might be a good idea for the project, and why it is something that we would want to, given our discretionary approval, approve the project.
Steve Schwanke, the architect, and from Menlo Park. So, the purpose for a use permit is because it is a substandard parcel, so it's mandatory. And that's why this one is in front of you. The minimum lot width is 110 feet, I believe, and this is 108 and a half, so it's 18 inches narrower than 110 feet. It's a good-sized parcel. And like it says, there's 15 heritage oaks on the property, and we're putting up a two-story family home with a, it's classified as an ADU, but it's really like a cabana for their family and/or aging parents. So that's sort of the crux of what we've got for this submittal.
Thank you.
Sure. And I'm here to answer any other questions.
Great. No, stay close. We're going to, any clarifying questions for the applicant? Commissioner DeCarty.
I have a clarifying question about the driveway and the proposed removal of the heritage Doug fir that's in the front corner. And it's being proposed to be removed because the tree is in poor shape, and because the driveway needs to go in that particular location. The arborist report and its designation of the health of the tree, there are other trees in that list that have similar designation that are staying. So I have one question, which is, how unhealthy is that tree relative to others that are not considered for coming down? And then the second one is noticing where the driveway is, isn't there an option to actually slide that driveway over a bit? And if, in fact, that tree is worth keeping, how detrimental to the project would that be?
Okay. Well, the tree is leaning considerably, and is unhealthy, and it's actually leaning towards the adjacent parcel. And so, and we did a very thorough analysis, I mean, like it said, there's 15 trees there, and only one is being removed. And it's for that purpose. And I don't think that the, I don't think that the, adjusting the driveway is enough improvement for the sake of that tree, for the health of the tree. It's not a good tree. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before I move to public comment? Seeing none, stay close, I'm going to call for a public comment, and just have a seat, and then if we have any questions, I'll let you know. Thank you. So I'm looking for any public comment on this last item, F3, this evening? If you'd like to give a public comment, may I ask if you've filled out a card already? Have you filled out a public? Great. Then after you're done, if you'd fill one out.
Certainly.
And please tell us your name, and your address, or political jurisdiction, and/or organization, and then you have three minutes. Good evening.
Sure. My name's Robert Scott Lessing, and my wife and I live immediately behind the property at 725 San Mateo Drive. And I appreciate the public notice we've received, two, over the last several months. And of course, my eye was trained on the rear property line, the one that we have in common. And a couple of anomalies, one we noticed, the fence is not in the correct location. I think that dates way back. So, we'd asked that the fence be relocated on the actual property line. It's about three and a half feet, as near as I can figure, into the new construction. But a couple of other concerns, the two public notices we'd received in the past shows the pool oriented in different ways. One appeared to be 10 feet from the setback to the property line. I was unclear on a pool setback. But then the plan I just received here this evening shows the pool relocated. But the ADU is moved to within four feet, or four feet of the property line. Reading the summary notes, it looks like that is a different permit process for the ADU. And I guess if that is the case, I'd ask what the process is for public comment on a four-foot setback from the rear property line for that ADU. The drawing also calls for an AC unit with no apparent screening, also four feet from the property line, which, we don't have air conditioning, and we do sleep with our bedroom door open. That would be 25, that would be 34 feet from the air conditioner would be my bedroom door. So, concern, and it sounds like maybe this ADU will be occupied, which is fine, but that tells me the air conditioner will be running. So, either a relocation, several of the trees So either a relocation, several of the trees along the property line have been removed or absent from the drawing, so I'm curious about the screening and landscaping plan as it relates to a new fence on the, on the property line. And those are my primary concerns.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Appreciate that. Is there any, well, those comments are noted, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment on this particular item? Seeing no one else coming forward and having no cards, I will now close public comment and bring it back up to the dais for additional commissioner discussion. Commissioner Cale.
Thank you. I'll note that I'm friends with Mr. Lessings, but I can, doesn't influence my, my comments.
I'm through the chair. That's the architect?
Sorry, no, the speaker just, the gentleman just spoke.
The gentleman just spoke. Thank you.
If I can, through the chair, wanted to just ask staff about the SDU and our role in that. So I know that we're not allowed, we're not reviewing that project tonight, but I guess that's the question. Are we reviewing the SDU tonight?
So as the staff report states, new state laws went into effect January 1st that actually prohibit the discussion, discretionary action on accessory dwelling units in most cases. The, the purpose of the state law is to streamline the approval of accessory dwelling units, so there are only very limited cases where they can be discussed in any sort of discretionary review. In this case, the ADU meets all development standards per the new state law and therefore is not part of the scope of the use permit. So it will be approved in a ministerial manner, which would just be a simple building permit.
Commissioner Cale.
That was my understanding, that we are not really discussing the SDU this evening. Just regarding the, the two comments or questions, the, the new accessory dwelling unit laws are allowed for a four-foot setback, so it looks like the applicant's taking advantage of that. And any, as we discussed in the last project, any air conditioning has certain decibel parameters that they have to meet per the city minimums. Regarding the house itself, I think it's highly approvable. It has great proportions. It has tall ceilings, but it works very well on the large lot. It's great to see the, the garage doors are on the side and not visible. And just the overall composition and material has worked really well, so I definitely support approval.
Commissioner Kennedy.
I agree with Commissioner Cale. I think that this is a marked improvement from what appears to be a very compoundy look on that street. I was happy to see that the existing ADU is going to be replaced with a new ADU, so that, that brightens my spirit in the city of Menlo Park. And I would make a motion to approve this project.
I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kennedy for approval per the staff report.
Second?
Commissioner Cale. Second, from Commissioner Cale. I have a first from Kennedy, second from Cale, looking for any other commissioner, prior to calling for a vote, looking for any other commissioner comment on this particular project. Seeing no lights on, seeing a light on. Commissioner Riggs.
Through the chair, perhaps I could address this question to Mr. Turner. When it comes to the AC unit, I think I recall that our nighttime decibel reading is 50 decibels, which I've been told is equivalent to being in San Bruno when an airplane flies overhead, or to be present in a lively but not loud conversation. Neither one of those is my view of a sleeping-oriented noise regulation, and I have brought this up with counsel from time to time, going back to, I think, year 2000. So it's a rather loose regulation. Would, would your observation of the project conclude that the fence itself will have a meaningful reduction in the sound of the air conditioner?
So a little bit about AC units, they, they are regulated by the noise ordinance. There, there is no specific setback or, for example, it's not like the ordinance surrounding pool equipment where it needs to be housed in some sort of noise canceling enclosure. So I can't really speak to the noise reduction that the fence would provide. Because the AC unit is governed by the, the noise ordinance, they, the applicants are and the owners are required to adhere to that. I don't think at this point in time we know the specific model of air conditioning unit, but it is more of a code compliance issue. If the, if the applicant installs the air conditioning unit, if the neighbors think it is in, in excess of the 50 decibel noise limit at the property line, then they are free to, free to ask for a code compliant, submit a code compliance complaint, which would be followed up by the code enforcement officer to see if there is indeed a, if they are indeed in excess of the noise ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. I think my reaction to the facts of our code would then be that there really isn't any protection from air conditioning equipment noise at night. So it has, I think, been common here at the planning commission since Melody Pagey was on the commission, and there isn't a single person here who would remember that far back. But that was probably 2006 or 2008. And so we've been looking at air conditioning unit locations ever since. So I can't think of a reason not to ask for the unit to be relocated on the applicant's side, applicant's house side of the proposed SDU. Clearly, the arguments indicate that the noise would not bother the applicant, whose house is actually further from the SDU than, than Mr. Blessings' house is from the proposed SDU. It seems like a relatively harmless request. So I, I would ask if the maker and seconder would consider including a request for that relocation.
The first was from Cale. Who was the first on this? Kennedy and Cale's the second?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll go to the maker first.
I don't see any problem with that.
Go to the seconder.
So I guess the question is, can we make that recommendation since it's, it's not subject to discretionary review, more of a friendly suggestion to the applicant? I guess it's a question for staff.
That's correct. Since the ADU is not part of the discretionary action, you would not be able to condition the use permit on relocating the AC unit for the, for the ADU, and it would have to be more of a friendly recommendation to the applicant.
So I think that's an excellent suggestion. The, the wall here that faces Mr. Blessings' house is seven feet away. The, the adjacent wall is 10 feet away from the property line, so I think we could ask the applicant if they'd be willing to relocate the, the condenser, but otherwise I don't think we have any say in, in the matter. And I wouldn't mention, I think it's 55 decibels at night and 65 during the day, but I could be mixing up my cities.
Through the chair, if I could quickly add something. So I did pull up the ordinance, so it is 50 decibels at night and 60 decibels during the daytime. And also, since the ADU is not regulated as part of the use permit, I think it's fine for the commission to make a suggestion, but asking the applicant to respond, I don't think that's correct procedurally because their response shouldn't change any commissioner's vote on the use permit.
Okay. So we will leave that as said, but not responded to? Looking for other comments on this project? Seeing no other comments, I will call for a vote on the motion, first from Kennedy, second from Cale, to approve the project per the staff report with no conditions related to the approval. All in favor, please raise your hand. As the record show, Commissioner Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, DeCarty, and Cale all voting in the affirmative. That's unanimous. Congratulations. Your use permit is approved. And with that, we have finished the three, excuse me, the three, yeah, three items for public hearing, F1, 2, 3. We'll move to G informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer.
Yeah, so for the March 9th meeting, we have two single-family homes, one at 130 Baywood Avenue and one at 106 Baywood Avenue. Then we have a gas station at 1800, oh, I'm sorry, a gas station at 710 Willow Road, and that's a request for a use permit to operate an existing service station for 24 hours a day and to allow alcohol sales every day from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. the following day. And then there is a use permit request at 1800 Al Camino Real to allow massage therapy and to allow a change of use on a parcel that's substandard with regard to parking. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question as it relates to 40 Middlefield. What is happening on that parcel?
So it looks like they haven't submitted a use permit application. We can reach out to the applicant, but we're not aware of any reasons. I'm sorry, they haven't submitted a building permit application, and we're not aware of any reasons, anything that's holding it up, so we can reach out and find out.
Would you be so kind as to query them as to the status and, yeah, as it relates to the status of that project moving forward? Anything from my fellow commissioners to staff for the informational item part of this evening? Seeing none, I will close tonight's evening, excuse me, I will close tonight's meeting at 8:25 in the evening. Thank you all for coming.[1661.61]